This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 23 to Tenino City Council work session. I heard somebody's news playing there a minute ago. There's a lot of people here. What is? Oh, John, John's listening to who knows what. We do not have any specific items on the work session tonight. So we're just opening it up and if there's any topics anyone would like to discuss, we can, we can discuss them and, and or if not, we, we can go to recess for 30 minutes and come back at 7:30. Does anyone have any items that they would like to discuss?
Real quick, did everybody get the, the after meeting report that I sent on Trent State Policy Board?
I did. Thank you, John.
Welcome. This way I don't have to go into a long diatribe on it.
Who else do we have here? Chief, do you want to give your report?
I'm sorry, were you calling on me, Wayne?
Yeah. Do you want to give your report since we've got time in the work session and then you can call it a night if you'd like?
Yeah, I don't really have anything exciting to report this week. If anybody has anything they'd like to toss at me, I'd be happy to hear it.
How's FTO training going for the, the two new people?
Going great. We've, we actually released Drew this weekend. So he's going to be solo. And that's Officer Johnson and we're anticipating a few more weeks with Officer Lee and then he should be out on his own.
Okay. Anything else going on at the cop shop?
That's, that's pretty much what we've been working on is the FTO and we've both been there quite a bit. Working on the field training, so.
Okay. Have you guys heard anything about the new vehicle?
I believe, I believe Maria was updated that it should be here in about a week and a half.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the police chief?
We have an old police vehicle that's going to be for sale.
There was talk about surplusing the Tahoe, but I'm not sure what the plan is now.
Okay. Keep me abreast. I may have a buyer.
Oh, okay. Great.
All right. George Sharp, you want to, you want to give your report on the Chamber of Commerce and on the EDC and on Steady and any, oh, anything else? History?
Yeah, I'll start with the Chamber of Commerce. And Chamber, over the weekend, had the Tenino Spring Arts Market and it was phenomenal success. A lot of people came in. The Chamber also launched the new COVID 2019 Small Business Recovery Program, which is for a $20 bill, residents and citizens will receive a $21 bill. And they sold over $3,500 of wooden money over the weekend. The museum sold out of the money that they had. Sanco Cafe was closed and then we had retained the rest of the money at the Spring Arts Market to release. The money now will be available at OB Credit Union and also at the Sandstone Cafe for people to buy. The business owners can then, who accept the money can redeem it through the Chamber. The Chamber will issue checks on the first, around the first and the 15th of every month to the small businesses. I think we have about 15 businesses who have already signed up to participate in the program and accept the money from the EDC. You'll, you'll be attending the EDC board meeting tomorrow, so you'll be.
I'll be at work.
You'll be at work.
Well, I mean, I could try, but if a fire or something cracks up, I can't, I can't do both.
Yeah. And then Councilmember O'Callahan attended Steady last week and I don't know, would you like to say what happened, John, or you want me to give an update?
Oh, I might tag on to what you have to say, so go ahead.
So we had the Thurston Regional Planning Council attend the meeting and talk about the impact of telework and especially what's happening at the Washington State Capitol and state government where a lot of the organizations are shutting down to 50% occupancy. So 50% of their staff will remain working from home. And what that impact might have on our rural communities as a positive impact with people staying closer at home and then shopping closer and eating in a restaurant closer to their home. Also, impact of residential sales. There would be a lot of people interested in staying in this area and/or moving down Seattle and Pierce County areas to come there. John?
Some of, some of the things that I brought up on that part of it was on the, on the, the housing because, and this is not just random to Thurston County or the state of Washington. I've been reading reports all over the country and what we're seeing here is amplified in some places and to a lesser degree in others. But the important part for the last 25 years or so, the Thurston County has been trying to get people to work from home. And the biggest problem was is that employers did not trust the employees to actually get the work done. Because of the, because of the COVID-19, we now have seen that that's not the case. When people are working at home, they actually get to set their time. So if they want to have some time with the kids, they can do that and still have their work done because they'll stay up a little bit later. Their hours are a lot more flexible and a lot more work really is getting done. So we have complete new paradigm shift throughout the United States as far as telework and staying home, which is going to have a positive and negative effect. And the example that I used is the Evergreen Plaza Building, 7-Eleven downtown Olympia on Capitol. That building is less than half full and people are moving out. And it's simply because they can, most of the, most of that building is government and they know that they can now do a lot of the work from home. What we're going to start seeing, I believe, is a downshift in people working at office buildings. Except if it has to be public relations, whereas where you can't get away with one something over the phone, you've got to be able to be hands-on. And that's going to be reduced on a governmental level. And for stores and stuff like that where you really can't, but in that, that vein as well, we're seeing a lot of people doing online shopping. Not just for clothes and stuff like that, but for actual groceries. We're, we're going through a major paradigm shift as far as online working and how we're doing a lot of the stuff that we've done in the past just by going out there. That's the things that I've brought up.
Thanks, John. The other thing with the, with the Chamber is that on April 21st will be the next General Membership Lunch Forum. And that's where we're inviting all the community organizations who serve the citizens of Tenino to make it a better place to live, work, play, do business, to come and give a two to three minute update on what they're doing with their community. Would like to thank the mayor for presenting at the March Chamber Lunch Forum. I thought it went really well and had great questions and thank you for, for doing that, Mayor. One year.
My pleasure. Is there a, anything from the Fire District, Mr. O'Callahan?
We finally have a lieutenant. I can't remember, I can't remember his name because I'm not familiar with all the firemen yet. Chris, he's also the union guy. And he, he tested out and passed pretty well with the make lieutenant for our department.
Okay. So their, their attorney reached out to our attorney to talk more about contracts and talk more about charges for service. I still think it's a, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a dangerous proposition. They're, and they're, you know, their position is somewhat, you know, it is somewhat uncomfortable and weird where it pushes us all. Talking to Rick, I will be asking them and you that we all meet as elected officials with no staff to try and talk out the issues and, and get down to kind of brass tacks. That hopefully we can get that in the next couple of weeks going on. So I'll keep you guys abreast of that. Library, they attended our last meeting. I don't see any of them here. Maybe they'll come on later. Anything from the museum?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Tenino Community Service Center. I don't see Jody here, but the, they've got a big event this weekend. The, they're, they're doing a big dedication for their, their flag pavilion area and kind of a garden that was built as part of an Eagle Scout project. And they're doing their annual Robin Rudy Memorial Run. It is in the same place. Rachel and Jason, I was kind of, I was getting some different information. It is going to be at the actual food bank building. So you guys can attend together and you can paper, rock, scissors, who, who says any remarks on the city's behalf. But our representatives at that event are going to be Rachel and Jason. Thank you for doing that. Arch Commission. It's you again, Mr. Sharp.
So we should have another three people now that the arts, spring arts events done, being applying. And we have received one candidate so far that will be presenting forward to you.
Planning Commission. Is there anything? No.
Let me see. Their meeting was canceled.
Yes. Chief of Police already spoke. Director of Public Works is deathly ill. Don't put that in the newspaper. He's just sick. He's been sick for a couple of days. And so hopefully he'll be feeling better tomorrow. They spent the day cleaning up the tree that fell on the toys in the park and kind of trying to get that area cleaned up as well, while it was dealing with their everyday potholes and sewer pumps. That's their bread and butter. City Planner, Building Official. Just something that, something that we need to be, you know, kicking around and thinking about. And so Ben has retired. We have retained the services of a, of a new contractor. And it, the price went from, we went from having very cheap building prices to having probably normal building prices. So there's, there's some, there's some pain amongst some of the developers and some of our, some of the costs that the new contractor is charging. I, Rainier and Buacota haven't had any, any buildings go up or any developers approach them, so they haven't felt it yet. But I did, I did forewarn them that we need to, we need to, we need to look at this a little more critically and kind of figure out what we want to be doing here because there could be a, a pretty significant cooling effect on development, which, you know, it doesn't, doesn't, it's not what we want.
What kind of prices are you trying to get? Olympia prices?
I, I have, I have no, I have no ability to say, you know, like what they are. I mean, I, he, his office is out of Centralia, Chehalis. So these are, you know, these are Lewis County prices, I guess. But we were getting a, and we all knew it. We all knew that we were getting a very great service from Ben Barnes. And it is, it, it would be impossible to expect to, to get that again. But yeah, I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's, it's tough. The city attorney just had his Achilles worked on, so he is at home with his legs up. City Clerk Treasurer, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't.
Okay. My report. I attended some various meetings. I attended my first EMS council meeting. There was nothing to report. The, the big, the work that was being done there was appointing new officers. They had a, a woman that had been the EMS council chair for something like 25, 30 years. What was her name? Maggie? Margaret? Yeah, yeah.
On that board, you there until you're ready to die?
Yeah. Yeah. And so she's staying on the board as a past president, but she, man, she's been, she's been sitting up there as a chair for a long time. And the new one, I believe, is Stan Moon, who's a fire commissioner that has also been around for a very, very long time. So there, that was, that was the big talk. There were a whole lot of not other things going on. Had, had the, the hearing for the, I don't know if I can even, I, I think I can talk about it. It was in city business. The hearing for the recall was last Thursday. All, all, all charges made by the citizen were thrown out by the judge and found, the judge stated that they were both insufficient and lacking. What, I'm trying to recall the exact terms. They lacked, they were not, they were both not legally sufficient or factual. So even if they were factual, the claims were not, would not have, still not have been legally sufficient to move forward for recall. On the subject of, of reimbursement and getting attorney fees, that was brought up. The prosecuting attorney tried to say that, that due to, whatever, it was like chapter eight of the, the recall statutes, they say that a petitioner shall not be charged for filing. And they were trying to say that that means they can't be charged as attorney fees. The city's attorney said, no, that's not the case. The judge agreed that, no, that is not the case. But he said, you know, it was like, you know, people need to be able to file recall statutes and I, or file recall petitions. And I think we all agree with that. This is the only way that citizens have to air their grievances. And they should be able to do that. There's lots of ways to air grievances. You can come in and knock on the door of City Hall and you can talk to people. You can speak with your council members. There, there's lots of ways to deal with it. But I, it, it seemed like it was very tenuous or kind of on the cusp of whether a fees would be awarded or not. And our attorney said, judges always look to find a middle ground and this was the bone that was given. However, it, it was made very clear that if anything was done frivolously in the future by, you know, the same individual, attorney fees would certainly be on the table. So that, that wasn't a bad outcome. It was everything, everything went, went great. Be that.
They changed their meetings now. It's going to be the third Wednesday of every month. So their next meeting isn't until April 21st at 5:30. So I won't have nothing until the end of April.
Okay. Solid Waste?
Nothing new to report for Solid Waste, but I did have my waste and recovery tour. And that was wonderful. I learned a lot of interesting information, more about how the new contract's going to work out and the bidding process on that. So exciting.
Cool. Steady has already reported out unless you guys have anything further, George or John. TCOM 911, Tenino School Board.
Nothing new to report.
TRPC?
Nothing new to report. We meet next week.
Okay. TPB, you already sent out a, an email, but is there anything further?
Yeah. One of the things that we, that we were discussing were results on a lot of the, the different things that go out throughout the year. And over the years, it's been a real going to contention with me and I've brought it up several times. They're thinking that 1,500 responses is good. I don't believe so because of my background. I've been able to get that in a week just by going door to door. If we hired or got some, some interns, I could teach them how to go door to door, get 10,000 responses in a week and a half, two weeks to get a much better view of what Thurston County is thinking on transportation. Never mind have a better response. 1,500 out of, of over, well, over 250 or just under 250,000 people to me does not represent a good cross-section of what we, what we do. We can hit every apartment with a short survey to get those same answers with a much greater response and a much faster timeframe. I brought that up again at this last meeting. I'm done.
You're saying 1,500 of total Thurston County residents?
Yes.
What is that like? Point oh five percent?
Something like that, maybe even less, but there, there are ways and it's old school stuff. I used to do it all the time. I can teach people how to do it real quick. I can develop the, the questionnaire real quick. I can do the, do the calculations real quick. It's not hard to do. It's just doing it. And they've been depending on places like Elway for so long that it's almost like they don't know any other way. And I've brought this up several times. I don't think it's going to go anywhere again, but I put it out there.
Roger that. All right. That's it for reports. If there's nothing further to discuss on the work session, we'll take a 10-minute recess. All right. We'll be back at 7:30.
This conference will now be recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the March 23rd, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. I would like to ask everyone, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We have a very brief agenda this evening needing approval.
We have approval?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Then second is moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to the March 9th, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting Minutes.
Approve.
Second.
They have been moved and seconded to be approved as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. That brings us the consent calendar. Zoom in on this movie. This is the consent calendar consisting of March 10th, 2021 through March 23rd, 2021. Payroll EFTs and checks numbered 29773 and the amount of $27,653.83, $87 cents. Claims checks numbered 29733 through 29790 and EFTs in the amount of $34,382.60 for a grand total of $62,036.47 with no liquor cannabis renewals. We have a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session. We have no presentations. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, now is the time to do that. You'll be given three minutes. Provide your name and address. Is there anyone in the public that would like to provide public comment at this time? Moving on. We have no public hearings, no proclamations. That brings us to old business. So we have some of our regular annual events and special event permits and fee waiver requests that we usually lump in to one request of the council. This year, we have included the Tenino Farmers Market, the Race for Rowan 5K, the Robin Rudy Memorial Motorcycle Run, the OTD Music Festival, the Bike Race Weekend in the Park and the THS Graduation Parade. If the council would, would see, see to it, we'd like a motion to waive special event permits and fees. Okay.
Second.
And seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to new business. We have a resident, Ms. Tiffany Cox of 179 Ritter Street. She's had a water leak in January, which led to a nearly double water bill in February in the amount of $263.14. After proof of repair to the leak that was present was made, city health staff reduced the bill according to ordinance 12.04.245, reducing the bill by $28.10, bringing the balance due to $235.04. So we have done everything that we can within City Hall's power to help her out. She has no late fees and we, and we've told her that. However, Ms. Cox has asked that we take it to City, City Council and ask the City Council reduce the bill even more. Is Ms. Tiffany Cox present?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. You, you can have the floor.
Okay, great. Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody for the council for allowing me to speak today and be added to the agenda. Back in January, I, I had a water leak and Public Works staff with the city came and knocked on my door and informed me. I'm very appreciative of that. I wouldn't have noticed that there was a leak otherwise. And so I had them shut off my water and I discovered that there was a, a pretty large leak underneath my house with a quite a bit of water under there. And I was out, out of running water for six days until I could get a plumber to come out. And I've unfortunately just had, I guess, a series of unfortunate events with the recent storm that we had. I had a limb go through my roof. And then about a week or two later is when, when I got the leak. So I just wanted to come in front of City Council and ask for the possibility of reducing, reducing that bill further.
How much are you talking wanting to be reduced to? What do you want? What is it that you want to pay?
I would be appreciative if I could get it back to where it was. If, if $70 could be taken off of it to get back to, you know, my normal water bill runs between $155 and $165. So that's what I'd be asking today.
So I, I just want to, I want to jump in and like, I, we're, so, so we placed you on the council because you've requested, but we have to be very careful that there, we cannot grant just, just any request. So we have, we also have laws that we can't, we can't go outside, you know, left and right on. So, so the, the council has already given the administration a lot of, a lot of leeway in being able to work with our residents and waive late fees. We, we have no late fees right now. To, we have a program for reducing some of the bill and we have the ability to set up payment plans. But I mean, a payment plan is almost irrelevant when there's no late fees. So you can kind of pay as you will. But what we, what we, I cannot do is, is what the, like the Washington State Constitution will not allow us to do, and that is give away things. And really like the easy way to think about it is anything on the other side of the meter is the resident's responsibility. And, you know, there, there may sometimes maybe be some extenuating circumstances, but I can't envision what those would be. But, you know, we take it very seriously and we got a bunch of new software so that we can detect leaks. And our utility clerks is very. And our utility clerk is very diligent about that. And if, if she sees any surges in water use, we'll send public works out there to go check the meter and go work with the resident to determine if there was a leak. In the past, we didn't have the ability to do that. And some of the leak like you had might go on for weeks. And it wa- and it was a really, really bad situation. But it is the, the homeowner's responsibility if it's on the other side of the, of the meter. So I, I'm not, I, I want to say that I'm not sure what the council has the illegal ability to do, but what they cannot do is just like arbitrarily wipe away debt. There has to be some kind of reason. And that reason, you know, some of, some of the times we've, we've eaten it if we've had some type of meter issue. But I'm, I'm, I haven't heard that that is a thing here. Like there was an actual leak under your house, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, uh, but the numbers that you gave us of a hundred and four, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars a month, that means you're on sewer and water, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so what we need to do is to separate out the water bill. The water bills are on fifty bucks a month. And they gave you twenty dollars off of that. So we reduced your water bill by uh, twenty-eight dollars. So almost.
I made a good point, John. So that of that hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy dollar bill that you pay, I, only like thirty to forty of it really is water bill. The rest of it is a sewer bill and a large part of that is the debt service that we're all paying that was taken out to construct the wastewater treatment plant. So if you say, you, you, you know, so if you want to reduce it even more, we like that, that's not the water bill that's even being reduced. Does that make sense?
Yeah, understood, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's, I, that, it's a good point, John. Thank you for pointing that out because it is, it is a joint bill between the sewer and water. And really what, what we've already been able to do is, is reduce that water bill quite a bit. I don't, Jen, do you have any? Any insight into what portion of that bill would be the actual water bill? Sharber?
Sorry, um, I do not have that in front of me currently. I apologize.
Okay, so we're putting you on the spot. Um, so I'm not hearing. Go ahead.
I think eighty-four is sewer and the rest is water.
Okay.
I did, I didn't understand what Jen said.
She said she thinks eighty-four is sewer and the rest is water. Is that right? So is that on, that's on an average bill. You're not saying that's on uh, Ms. Cox's bill? Okay. So Ms. Cox, would it help if maybe tomorrow or the next day uh, city hall staff could, could maybe like look at your bill and like pull those two things apart for you personally and then, you know, like you could get a better feel for what the actual water portion is? And maybe that would make you feel a little more comfortable?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great. Um, I, I'd appreciate that. And thank you for uh, taking the time to explain that out for me.
Yeah, of that two hundred and thirty-five dollars due, that's not, you know, that's not all affected by the water leak. Some of that was just the, the standard sewer bill. But then, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe, maybe that water portion that we're asking, that we're saying you have to cover is only like a, a sixty dollar portion. And I don't know if that makes you feel better?
I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Does anyone have any further thoughts or comments or concerns or anything towards uh, Ms. Cox or her request?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Ms. Cox, for attending. We'll keep moving on. Uh, that brings us to resolutions. We have no resolutions. We have no ordinance. We've already conducted our reports. We're extremely efficient tonight. And that brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that is a member of the public that would like to provide comment, now is your time to do so. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address. Hearing none, moving on. And that brings us to announcements. So John Callahan.
Yeah, of course. Uh, the first responders potluck barbecue, according to everything else that I'm seeing throughout the county and the state. Uh, it looks like it will be on time, September eleventh, which is also a very important anniversary for not just me, but for the rest of the country as well. Uh, that's nine eleven. You guys remember what happened at that point. Uh, so in another month or so, I'm going to start buying everything. Remember this is. Excuse me?
I don't think.
Uh, but in any event, uh, this is a free event. Doesn't cost anybody anything. We do ask that uh, you bring something that you can share with everybody else, some, some kind of a side dish. Uh, there'll be a hot dogs, hamburgers and uh, uh, the, all the different condiments and, and a lot of this different stuff to drink. It's just to say thank you to all the first responders in Thurston County. That's all it's for. Nothing political. It's just to say thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Cutter, what is your birthday?
July twenty-second, nineteen ninety-nine, so.
Okay, yeah, you were, you were a big boy.
Yeah.
You hope.
He was wearing his under roots then.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, and I'm hearing no further announcements. Uh, we will move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.